All right, we'll call a beating of order at this time. Thank everyone for coming this evening. And as we normally do, I will offer an invocation and then we'll follow that by a pledge of allegiance. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come again here today to go about the business of our city. A city that you have been so gracious in your giving to us, even though sometimes we struggle to try to find a way to make things work out for the best. We know that you're always here with us. We know that you will never leave us. We know that you're always there if we look to you. So Father, we ask these things in your name. We ask that you would continue to bless those around the world that are so much less fortunate than us, even those in the midst of our community. We just know that you are the maker of all good things, and for that we give you thanks. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is to adopt the business agenda. If anyone's had the opportunity to review it, we would need a motion to approve it as it is, or if there's any changes to be made at this time.
Make a motion to approve the agenda stated on paper.
Motion is by Councilman Bell. Councilman Stainback with the second. On the motion, is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. If opposed, no, motion will be approved. Under scheduled public comment, we do have one individual, Mr. Short, has signed up to speak. Mr. Short, if you would please come to the podium for your time. If you don't mind, state your name and where you live, and I think you had already been notified. We generally allow five minutes for scheduled public comment. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Short. I live 761 Rivers Edge Parkway, run at Rapids here locally. I am here tonight to discuss a few situations that I'm fighting and I've gone through since June. I had to go over Public Works, actually spoke with the city manager to get one of these things resolved. That was as far as I got, so now I'm still burning time. I also printed out some things that I can show you guys for documentation. My main concern is the enforcement of the grass in our neighborhood, which I had to go over Public Works, and after speaking with your attorney and the city manager, we were able to push forward with that to a certain extent. They are building a lot of new homes in this neighborhood, and in doing that, these lots that they are building on are also grass in some areas of five feet tall. Not only that, the porta johns are on the sidewalks, and the sidewalks have been covered by gravel. One injury has resolved from riding a bike. A kid hit the gravel, went over the bicycle. And from what I understand, the city is required for maintaining these sidewalks, for individuals to walk on, people to ride bikes on. And it's impossible for anyone to do that at this moment, as you can see in the images. And other people have built homes. No one else that has built homes has put porta johns on the sidewalks, containers on the sidewalks. You know, a kid wrecks a bike again and hits that container, gets a big cut across their face or their arm. You can only imagine the lawsuits that would be lined up out the window or out the door. And after reading the code that you guys have, I feel like I have a reason to bring it forward.
Did that conclude your comments?
Yes.
Okay. Just to go back over what our general procedure is, that we listen and take it under advisement, so to speak, and it seems like you've already been having some conversation with Public Works and with city manager, and that is generally the way that things are followed up by.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for bringing these. Appreciate it. Okay, we need a motion on two sets of meeting minutes. We have one regular meeting and the planning retreat, August the 19th and 20th. I assume we can probably take in one motion. Here's such a motion.
Mayor, I would like to motion to approve the August 19, 2025 regular city council meeting and the August 20, 2025 strategic planning retreat minutes as drafted.
Okay, motion is by Mr. Stainback and a second is by Mr. Bell. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Those two sets of minutes would be approved as they are presented. I call on the clerk. We have a library advisory committee appointment or reappointment. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council and citizens. The term for Marcy Merritt on the library advisory committee expired May 23rd. Ms. Merritt has served the maximum number of two consecutive terms allowed by city policy, but would like to be considered for another term. Council has the authority to waive this section of the policy and has done so in the past. Also, Amy Major submitted an application to serve on the library advisory committee, which was enclosed in your packet. She is eligible, and there are currently two vacancies on the committee. City council took a ballot vote earlier, and both Ms. Merritt and Ms. Major received a unanimous vote to be reappointed and appointed. Therefore, I respectfully request city council consider a motion to waive the city policy and reappoint Marcy Merritt and appoint Amy Major to the library advisory committee.
I would like to make a motion to set a motion to waive the city policy and reappoint Marcy Merritt and appoint Amy Major to the library advisory committee.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Jackson and a second by Ms. Bryant. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. If opposed, no, those individuals will be appointed to the library advisory committee.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Story. Call on the finance director for the first item on the new business, the governor's highway safety program.
Yes, this is the second year that the police department will participate in the highway safety program. Last year, we participated. We bought a vehicle, that sort of thing. These funds for year two have already been budgeted in our budget, so I would like to request that the council adopt resolution 2025.8, accepting the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program grant agreement for year two.
Does anybody have any question for call for a motion? If there being none, call for a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025.08, accepting the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program grant agreement and funding for year two.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Prothean Bryant. Do we hear a second to a motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stainback, I believe. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no, the motion will be approved. I believe you have the next two items, Ms. Johnson.
Yes. The police department received unauthorized substance tax funds in the amount of $57.35, so I would like to request that you approve budget amendment 2025.28.
I make a motion to adopt budget amendment ordinance number 2025.28 in the amount of $57.35 for OSC unauthorized substance tax.
Second. All right, motion by Councilman Jackson and a second by Councilman Bell. Any more discussion? If there is none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. And all opposed, no, motion will be approved also.
And the next item, the members of our fire department, they voluntarily participated in the deployment to the western North Carolina during the disaster, the hurricane Helene. And they received $10,844.86 in reimbursement from FEMA. So I would like to request that you adopt budget ordinance 2025.29 in the amount of $10,844.86 for the FEMA reimbursement.
Okay, we need a motion to approve this.
Make a motion to adopt budget amendment ordinance number 2025.29 in the amount of $10,844.86 for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025 FEMA reimbursement.
Okay, there are motions by Councilman Bell, a second by Councilman Jackson. Do you hear any discussion on the matter? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no, motion will be approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. And item D is the consideration of the rules of decorum for public comment, and for that I call on our attorney, Mr. Davis.
So these, you've got the draft document here in your packet, and I know everybody's had a chance to look at it. This is something that a lot of municipalities have nowadays. And I know anytime you're talking about public comment, we want to give the public an opportunity to come in and say their piece and comment on city business. And when I drafted these and when we kind of came up with these, and this is substantially based on ones that other municipalities have, because I don't believe in reinventing the wheel. But these rules already essentially memorialize the rules that we have always applied to public comment. And so those of us that have been, those of you that have been on council for a while, or those of us that have been at meetings for a while, understand these different rules that are in here. And so I wanted to kind of put this before council and see what council's thoughts were on it. And the way I look at it, this is not expanding, this is certainly not restricting public comment any other way than we would have already done it. Instead, what this does is memorialize the rules. It puts them down in a short, one-page document. And that way, potential speakers can have access to that and can understand it beforehand. You know, it's one of those things, rather than having these rules that we kind of think about and we understand as folks that are familiar with city business and with the way that the way that public comment works and the ways, and the way that meeting procedures I think this is a good thing for the public to have access to, so they can look at it, rather than kind of getting called out in the moment, so to speak, for something that was essentially the rule before. And so I would kind of, you know, subject to your questions, that's essentially my presentation. You know, we also have a document called Rules of Procedure that was passed many years ago. I suspect that at some point in the distant past, there probably were rules of decorum. But the city manager and I discussed it, and I said to her, I said, "Well, even if there is a document that may be from the 90s or something, I would hesitate to just dig that back up if it exists. I would rather put a new document in front of council, so our current council could look at it, express their thoughts and their feelings on it." And like I say, I think we have always, you know, at least since I've been on council, and I'm certain from before, within recent history, we have always been very receptive to public comment. You know, our clerk, if somebody calls, we'll schedule and get it on the agenda. I don't ever want to do anything that is discouraging the public from coming to a meeting, from being involved in city business, and certainly from commenting and expressing their opinion. I think this will help them to be able to understand, you know, what the guidelines are and where the, where are the things that it's really not the proper forum and public comment isn't, isn't correct for it. So, subject to your questions, that's my presentation.
Anybody have any questions of the attorney? The only thing I would make is one comment on it about where it says the statute only mandates that we do it once a month, and the city of Roanoke Rapids, at least since I've been here, has always done it on both our meetings. So we allow people twice a month to be able to come, and they can come at the last minute and sign up, or either they can reach out to the clerk and get on the agenda and also do the same thing. And that's worked out well.
I'll add too, this is, this is actually, there are more restrictive rules of decorum out there from other municipalities. This is not, not as restrictive as some places do it. This, I think, is fair and kind of memorializes what we do.
If there are no more questions, I would ask for a motion to approve this as the attorney has presented it.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the rules of decorum as a supplement to the rules of procedure of the Roanoke Rapids City Council, Section 5, public comment on the city, to the city council.
Okay, the motion is by Councilman Strickland. Do we hear a second to his motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, no. Motion will be approved. Mr. Davis?
So the next item on your agenda is consideration of the SRO agreement between the city and the Roanoke Rapids Greater School District, SRO, school resource officers for the public. This was on the agenda last meeting, and we chose to table it. It was also being presented the same night at the, at the school board. The school board passed the agreement as it was presented last time with some changes to it. So the agreement that is currently in your packet reflects those changes. Two big ones, there were some clarifications regarding the storage of Viper radios for the public. Viper radios are what law enforcement has transitioned to as far as being able to communicate with 911 and central communications. It's just there. Somebody else could probably describe it better than I can, but it's the current way that they're expected to, to, you know, have those communications. And there's, there are some restrictions on the purchase and the storage of those radios that we wanted to make sure we had some, some good language for. The second thing is the elimination of what was formerly Section 5. So what was Section 6 in last, in last month's agreement has become Section 5 as Section 5 has fallen, has been removed. That was a section that discussed potential ideas for the future of the SRO program. Like I say, the school took that out of their version that was passed, and so the version that is being presented to council now is essentially the same document that was presented two weeks ago, but with those changes that the school board adopted. So, subject to your questions, that's, that's the agreement.
And it has a one year, one year?
That's correct. And we, and originally, I think, we kind of went back and forth on that in the drafting process. This is something we've been kind of working on over the summer. And we kind of talked about, you know, what our, what our thoughts were as far as the timeline. So we ended up kind of settling on one year to kind of see how, see how the situation works over the year and then kind of reconsider it again. And it may be a year from now, we're presenting the same agreement. But, you know, that, that way council is not, council and the school district is not locked into it.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, Mr. Davis? If not, we need a motion to approve it.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll make a motion to approve the SRO agreement between the city of Roanoke Rapids and the Roanoke Rapids Greater School District and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Okay, the motion is by Mr. Steinbach, second by Mr. Bill. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion will be approved. And city managers report?
Good evening, mayor and council. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, September the 16th, and as an item from the approval of the SRO agreement, we will be bringing a budget amendment to you for consideration for the cost sharing of Viper radios that is included in that agreement. Also, at our next meeting, we'll be asking city council to consider a resolution of support for an application to the Halifax County Business Horizons Local Economic Development Grant Program. Business Horizons is offering grants ranging from $15,000 to $50,000 for municipalities in Halifax County, including the county itself, aiming to support local government projects that boost economic vitality. There's a range of different types of projects that would be allowable under the program. The program does require a resolution of support or a letter of support from the council, and so our next meeting on the 16th would be our opportunity to, for council to consider prior to the application deadline of October the 1st. So we will present some ideas, but we do welcome your feedback. We'd like to have some ideas from you. If you want to reach out to me and contact me about those. Additionally, I would like to share that the North Carolina Department of Transportation is offering its biannual cleanup drive, or the fall litter sweep, from September the 13th through the 27th. The litter sweep is part of their roadside litter removal initiative, and they usually have one in the spring and then in the fall as well. Volunteer supplies are available by contacting the county coordinator in Halifax, and we can help with that information as well. But we constantly are picking up, after picking up debris and others, and so this is a real initiative to focus on that litter sweep. And then another thing I found interesting as part of the release on this is that DOT has a SWAT, a litter bug program that is supposed to be for educational purposes and encourages individuals to report those who litter to, by either calling a phone number, or there's an app that you can download on your phone, SWAT a litter bug, and when the information is submitted, DOT will in turn send the registered motor vehicle owner notice saying it's been observed that you littered. Here's potential penalties if you get caught doing it, and then also encouraging individuals to throw away their waste in a proper receptacle and not out the window of their vehicle. So those are a couple of different things going on there that we'd like to encourage participation in and just continuing to pick up litter and improve the community. In the fire department, Chief Patrick, his official retirement began yesterday, and in the interim right now, Richard Cook and Kenneth Hollowell, who are assistant chiefs of the department over operations and then over prevention, they'll be serving in a dual capacity until the recruitment and selection process is completed. Next meeting on September the 16th, the city council will officially recognize Jason's retirement, as well as some other promotions and recognitions within the department. September is lymphoma awareness month, and so are firefighters. You'll probably notice them wearing the lime green color on their shirts, not the ones they have on tonight, but their t-shirts or polo of that lime green color. And this is to honor the memory of Battalion Chief Kevin Hawkins, who passed away in October of 2019 from Hodgkin's lymphoma. They continue to prepare Engine 145 to enter into service, which is good timing because the insurance rating study is coming up very soon, and having the newer equipment in service helps to preserve our insurance rating and possibly improve it as well. The insurance rating survey is conducted every five years, and so this can have a major impact or cost saving for our property owners. And then on Saturday, September the 6th, the fire department will be participating in the community service, or emergency service community day at the Roanoke Valley Rescue Squad from 12 until 3:00. Other community events, Chick-fil-A will be hosting Cookies with a Cop on Tuesday, September the 9th, from 5 until 7:00. Encourage attendance at that. They'll have a Safe Kids Car Seat Check on September the 27th, and then also on the 27th will be the Fifth Annual Police Club's Cornhole Tournament, which is one of their big fundraisers for the Christmas on the kids, or Christmas for kids event that occurs in December. In the public works department, M.J. Price is still loading and hauling grindings from the May 16th storm event. We have had an unprecedented season this year of growth and, with grass and everything else, but still recovering from that May 16th storm event. They recently conducted nuisance abatement at 1407 Forest Street, and then also at 301 Premier Boulevard, which was the closed Highway 55 restaurant. And then coming soon, you'll see an image here in your packet where, and this is a project that was funded through the Halifax County Convention and Visitors Bureau last fiscal year, but they'll be installing four new gateway signs that say "Welcome to Roanoke Rapids" at the four main entry points into the city. And those gateway signs will be complimentary to the wayfinding signage that was installed a few years ago. In the planning development department, the planning board will meet on Thursday, September the 11th, to review some changes to the land use ordinance that are coming down from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA. Prior to adoption by the council, planning board review is required, and then the public hearing and adoption is set for September the 16th with council. FEMA has a mandatory adoption prior to September the 19th, so that current flood policies remain active and renewals made possible. There are several activities, building projects taking place throughout the town. State side landing continues with its progress for multifamily homes. I know a lot of people are very anxious for that to get started, but it looks great. There's a Planet Fitness that is, has a tentative opening date in about a month, in early October. And then site plans are under review for the expansion or to recreate or redo the drive-through for Burger King at 1480 Julian Alsbrook. If you've ever gotten caught in that driveway, in that, or in that drive-through line, it's a mess to get out of. And then 7-Eleven on the opposite side of the street, at the corner there, at Old Farm in Julian Alsbrook, where the Carolina Barbecue is currently located. There are several special events that our staff are working on to ensure safe events and enjoyment for the community. The Walk for Life coming up, they'll go from 1026 Roanoke Avenue to Centennial Park on the 13th, and then later that day, there'll be the Alabama Concert at the Carolina Crossroads Theater, or Amphitheater. On the 20th, Hope for Hardy will hold the Twilight Festival at Centennial Park, and this year it will be on a Saturday from 2:00 to 9:00, rather than a Friday night, as it's been the last few years. Our Main Street Director, Ashley Thomas, is continuing to make progress to reestablish the Main Street program here in the city. She's updated the website with a lot of helpful information and met with a few new property owners of some buildings. And tomorrow we'll have a meeting with the Historic Preservation Office about the tax credit program that could benefit some of these property owners looking to improve their businesses or their property in the historic district. In the Parks and Recreation Department, the Roanoke Canal 5K will be held on September the 13th with the patriotic theme to help kick off America's 250th at the canal. And a unique prize and ultimate bragging rights await the participant who shines the brightest with patriotic pride. So registrations will be accepted at roanocanal.com, and that race will be at September the 13th, and people don't just have to run, they can walk too. There are several new classes at the Aquatic Center, including Aqua Zumba on Wednesdays, Aqua Tabata on Wednesdays at 12:00, and then Aqua Tai Chi on Fridays at 12:00. There are several activities at the senior center for Step Timber, to get your steps in. September 8th is a Movie Monday, and then ECU will host some health screenings and an educational session on September the 9th from 10:00 to 12:00. And then on, at 2:00 o'clock that day, there's an advanced care planning course. And on September the 17th, a representative from Don Davis's office will be available at the center from 10:00 until 12:00 for anyone to attend and address any issues within the community or have any, express any needs. At TJ Davis, toddler time has resumed at 10:00 o'clock on Fridays. And then also, the basketball season for youth basketball is getting ready to get started as far as with registrations, and this year we will have the online option available through rec desk. Typically, they're, especially like on trunk or treat night, there's been a big mad dash to get up, the basketball applications and registrations, and this provides a way so parents can submit their, their child's participation application at any time of day via the website. And the staff will have some social media and some tutorials on how to use the new online registration software. At the library, they are conducting the annual magazine fundraising drive, and then on September the 15th, there'll be a temporary computer shutdown there where they migrate to a new online reservation software. And then there's several passive programming opportunities at the library to participate in as well. And then at Challenger Recreation Center, the splash pad will remain open probably through the end of the month, as long as the weather is warm. And then they have karate on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and the after-school program started last week, and they have five participants currently. In human resources, we are advertising for the fire chief position. That position will be open until filled, however, the first review of resumes will occur no later than September the 26th. We have other positions available as well, certified police officer, public work, street maintenance worker, a custodial worker under Parks and Recreation, and then also part-time opportunities in Parks and Recreation through building supervisors or lifeguard. The city is in the, I guess, the final stages of the implementation or the testing of the NeoGov Government Human Resources Information System, or HRIS. This program will help to reduce the burden of manual processes for the human resources and finance teams. This system will streamline employee benefits, timekeeping and payroll processes. Other NeoGov solutions are underway as well. That will include online recruiting, online applications, and performance management, training, and documents and forms available for employees. Implementation of the new payroll system and time and attendance is expected to begin on September the 21st for all employees. And then in addition to NeoGov, we are working with OpenGov, and the two systems are complimentary. These were all funded with our benefit from the American Rescue Plan Funds, but the Open Gov Budget and Planning Module training is scheduled for the department leaders this Thursday in the afternoon, so that we can start talking about fiscal year 27 budget planning, and we'll start early. And so the, as we move into this, the future budgets will move away from our previous softwares and be fully integrated by the end of the calendar year in both systems. And then also, our auditor will be on-site on September 17th to the 19th to review the fiscal year 25 financials, and we continue to conduct our complete reports and monitoring for certain grants that are within our systems. Subject to your questions, that concludes my report for this evening. Subject to your questions, that concludes my report for this evening.
Any questions? We need a motion to adjourn if there's no other business. Have a motion, second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Ms., see, motion was by Ms. Steinbach, second by Mr. Bell. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion to adjourn.